Mr. DeMecroft called meeting boarder. Mr. Cox, please lead us in the place of allegiance.
To the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The record show all board members are present. Mr. Board has public notice been given?
Yes, it has.
Public comment. For policy 016723, anyone wishing to participate in the period of public comment must be a resident of Richland School District, a parent, or the usual guardian of an enrolled district student or an enrolled district student. Speakers are not permitted to make inflammatory comments, use inappropriate language or gestures, attack specific persons, or make a specific person or subject to their remarks. Please see policy 016723 for a complete list of requirements and restrictions. If a person is unable to hear these rules, they may be directed to end their comments. We do have two people wishing to speak to the board. Mrs. Steele, do you have any more?
No.
Okay. Jacqueline Zambrano?
Mrs. Stoltz, would you also please make sure the microphone is turned on? Thank you.
Do you require a translator, Jackie?
No.
Okay, so then you got three minutes then to speak to the board.
But I would like to translate my English speech right afterwards in Spanish, if that's okay?
Okay.
Okay, great. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jacqueline Zambrano. I'm the new Spanish teacher at St. Mary's School. I'm also the founder of the group United Latino Families, also known as Familias Latinas Unidas in Spanish. We are a group of 55-plus parents, families, and our residents of the Richland School District. Our main objectives are improving school safety, bullying, and communication. Tonight, I would like to talk about two very important topics. The first one is school shootings. This is not only a message for the Richland School District, but for all district's schools or districts throughout the nation. School shootings have become far too common, and too many innocent lives have been lost. Now, society focuses on the obvious victims: the children, the teachers, and staff that were injured or killed. Of course, we have to continue to provide support to these heartbroken victims. However, there is a victim that has been overlooked time and time again, and that is the armed student, him or herself. If you research the backgrounds of armed students, you will learn that the majority of them were victims themselves, as they were struggling with bullying, discrimination, and/or abuse in their home. These children need to be identified early on and helped in getting the resources they need. Society needs to change its mentality and consider the difficulties armed students face and have faced. That is the key to preventing school violence and ideally ending school shootings throughout the country. Our group has suggested several different safety measures for Richland schools. While we do have a community resource officer now, there is more that can be done. There's also two bullying classes called Box Out Bullying, but this falls short of identifying and helping emotionally and mentally unstable students. The second thing I would like to talk about is suicides related to bullying. I recently learned of a young teenage girl who took her life due to bullying at her school. Also, and I also recently learned that in the Richland School District, there have been around three or four cases of suicides due to bullying at school. This is so disheartening and so tragic. This shows just how serious the problem of bullying at the schools has become. This is not a boys-will-be-boys issue; it is much more serious. Our group has been requesting stronger consequences for bullies, appropriate consequences, as well as the equal implementation of consequences between races. Unfortunately, there are a lot of cases in which a white student gets a lesser consequence or even no consequence, while the Latino student gets harsher consequences for doing the same thing. It does not appear that the school environment has positively changed over the last year. Let's change that; let's save lives. Thank you for your time and attention. Okay, now I will do it in Spanish for the Spanish speakers here. Buenas noches, mi nombre es Jacqueline Zambrano, y soy la nueva maestra en la Escuela de St. Mary's. También soy la fundadora del grupo United Latino Families, or Familias Latinas Unidas en español. Somos un grupo de 55 padres, familias, y residentes hispanohablantes del distrito escolar de Richland. Nuestros objetivos principales son mejorar la seguridad escolar, el bullying, y la comunicación. Esta noche me gustaría hablar de dos temas muy importantes. Primero, en los tiroteos en las escuelas. Eso es un mensaje para el distrito de Richland y todos los distritos del país. Los tiroteos en las escuelas son demasiado comunes. Demasiadas personas inocentes se han muerto. Ahora, la sociedad se enfoca en las víctimas obvias: los niños, los maestros, y el personal que ha sido heridos o muertos. Claro que tenemos que seguir apoyando a las familias de corazones rotos. Sin embargo, hay una víctima que ha sido pasada por alto una y otra vez, y esta persona es el estudiante armado mismo. Si hiciera investigación sobre la historia de los estudiantes armados, usted aprendería que la mayoría de ellos son víctimas también, ya que estaban experimentando bullying, discriminación, o abuso en su casa. Es necesario identificar a estos niños temprano y ayudarles a conseguir la ayuda que necesitan. La sociedad necesita cambiar su mentalidad y considerar las dificultades de los niños armados. Esto es la clave para prevenir la violencia escolar y, en lo ideal, acabar con los tiroteos escolares por todo el país. Nuestro grupo ha sugerido varias medidas de seguridad diferentes para las escuelas de Richland. Ahora tenemos un policía de recursos comunitarios. Pero hay mucho más que se podría hacer. También hay dos clases llamadas Box Out Bullying, pero esto no es suficiente y no identifica ni tampoco ayuda a los estudiantes con problemas particulares de emocionales y mentales graves. Este segundo tema que me gustaría discutir es los suicidios relacionados con el bullying. Recientemente aprendí que una niña adolescente se suicidó por demasiado bullying en su escuela. También aprendí recientemente que tres o cuatro estudiantes del distrito escolar de Richland se han suicidado por el bullying en sus escuelas. Eso es algo muy trágico y muy desalentador. Esto demuestra qué tan grave es el problema de bullying en las escuelas. Esto no es un asunto de los niños; serán niños; es mucho más grave. Nuestro grupo ha pedido consecuencias más fuertes y apropiadas, y también hemos pedido que las consecuencias sean implementadas de manera igual entre las diferentes razas. Desafortunadamente, hay muchos casos en los cuales un estudiante blanco recibe una consecuencia leve, mientras el latino recibe consecuencias más fuertes por hacer la misma cosa. No parece que el ambiente escolar haya cambiado de manera positiva durante el último año, pero vamos a cambiar esto, vamos a salvar vidas. Muchas gracias por su tiempo y atención.
Andrew, you're starting up?
Muy buenas tardes a todos. Yo voy a necesitar este intérprete. Ella siempre nos ha apoyado en el tiempo que hemos estado en el grupo durante un año, tratando de, pues, de que ustedes nos escuchen y podamos mutuamente hacer algo por lo que está pasando hoy en día, y no solo aquí. Esto está pasando desde en otros lugares y aquí desde hace mucho tiempo.
Good evening, everyone. I am going to need an interpreter today, so I'm going to ask Monica, that's me, to interpret. Monica has been following us and our group for the last couple of years, helping us to work together with the school to mutually come to some kind of solution to what is going on here, but not just here elsewhere in other school districts as well.
I will entregar unos documentos donde hemos hecho todo el trabajo durante un año, y también vamos a entregar unos, este, unas encuestas. Si creen que puedan hacer ese trabajo por nosotros entregárselos a todos los niños hispanos, igual de, de blancos o morenos, de todo, ahora sí que a todos, y, este, para que ellos puedan llenar esa encuesta, y ellos nos hagan saber si en realidad está pasando aquí en este momento cosas graves.
So, I have here some documents that we have been working on for the past year or more, along with a set of questionnaires that we would like distributed to all the Hispanic students, so that they can fill out the questionnaire and let us know if, in fact, these serious things that we're talking about are going on in the school.
Y nos gustaría que nos entregaran esas encuestas para que nosotros supiéramos si algo ha cambiado durante el tiempo que hemos estado platicando y con ustedes, ¿no?
So, what we would like is for the questionnaires to be distributed and then returned to us, so that we can see if progress has been made in the time that we have been working with you.
Y desde cuándo nosotros hemos estado pidiendo que nos ayuden a decir cuáles son las consecuencias, porque nos hemos dado cuenta que no hay igualdad entre el hispano y el blanco, porque las consecuencias son siempre diferentes. Ya lo dijo, este, la madre de ahorita que pasó, Jacqueline, que, este, que las consecuencias no son las mismas, y yo, y yo tengo, pues, esa necesidad de saber cuáles son las consecuencias, y le voy a entregar las, gracias. A cada uno tiene su nombre.
One of the things Jacqueline, who just spoke, alluded to was the fact that the consequences for Hispanic students and non-Hispanic students when bullying takes place are not the same, and so that is why we are distributing these questionnaires, to see if any progress has been made.
Y también quisiera decir algo sobre mi experiencia que tuve yo hace cinco años aquí. Esto no es de ahorita, es de hace mucho tiempo, y yo lo que quiero es que podamos trabajar mutuamente para poder hacer algo.
And so now I would like to share an experience that I had five years ago, not now, this was in the past, in the hopes that together we can work towards a solution. I have experienced so many injustices here, outside of here. If I explained it in three minutes, I wouldn't finish. The only thing I learned is that most people here know each other, and they all help each other, and that affects and destroys because there is no equality, there is no empathy for others. Hypocrisy, influence, ambition, pure conservatism reign here. I would like to ask all the parents of Richland Center for a favor: before sending your children to school, sit down with your children for five minutes. Explain to your children that there is never a reason to make fun of someone for their height, for their weight, for their skin color, and much, and much less for their family life or for the things that happen to them. Tell them that there is nothing wrong with wearing the same shoes every day, and there is nothing wrong with not wearing brand-name clothing. Teach them that a used backpack carries the same dreams as a new backpack. Encourage them not to exclude anyone for being different. Explain to them that teasing hurts and that school is for learning, not for competing and spreading negativity. Remind them that some children and young people do not go home to loving families, so it is important to be kind to everyone. Teaching begins at home. Thank you.
Muchas gracias, y espero que entiendan que nosotros queremos hacer el bien para el bienestar de todos los niños, sino que estemos haciendo guerra con ustedes. Espero que no piensen eso y que podamos ayudarlos mutuamente.
Thank you very much for listening, and please know, we want you to understand that we want to work together for everybody, and this is not, we are not fighting against you, we want to work with you to find a solution.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Steele, that's all.
Is there any more? There wasn't any more.
Would anybody like to say anything? An interpreter?
No. They have to fill out form by the time to speak. I was asking Mrs. Steele if she had got any more favors to speak.
Did you have any more over there?
Elba, Rosa?
Muy buenas noches.
Good evening, everyone.
Como madre de una niña de España, este, quiero decirle que las veces que hemos reunido con la junta de directores y el superintendent de la escuela es para apoyar en quitar o bajar un poco la situación del bullying que se está dando, y también nosotros queremos como padre, le hemos venido pidiendo, verdad, que se nos comunique, también que se nos incluya en todas las actividades en las que podamos nosotros apoyar a ustedes. Para porque la escuela creo que es un triángulo donde tiene que ir unida los maestros, el director, y los padres de familia. Y no, nosotros no nos hemos presentado para atacarlos, ni para venir a denigrar a nadie, ninguno de los maestros. Nosotros estamos agradecidos porque nos han brindado su ayuda, su apoyo, nos han aceptado a nuestros hijos latinos en las escuelas, y también, pues, sabemos de que como latinos tenemos derecho a la educación aquí en este país. Es bien difícil para los niños, para nosotros como hispanohablantes, porque venimos con, solamente con la lengua española. Tenemos que aprender el inglés aquí, igual que nuestros hijos.
That was a lot. I will try to interpret that as best I can. So first, she'd like to say that she's very grateful, they're very grateful, for the work that you do, the welcome that you have given their children. She is the mother of a student here, a girl. She said that the group that formed of Hispanic parents and the superintendent, principals, teachers, was initially started to address the bullying issue, and she wants you to know that the parents are here not to fight against you, but to work with you and to provide support in whatever way they can. They would like to, as parents, to be included in whatever communication there is, whatever things that happen in the school, as parents, they would like to be included. And, yeah, but basically, this is a joint effort, but this is not, this isn't a fight, it's a collaboration.
Sí, y pues queremos que nuestras peticiones, ojalá que las puedan realizar, las puedan solucionar, porque es para ayuda de nuestra comunidad. Como hemos venido sabiendo de que ya en Richland, este, hay bastante hispanohablantes, por eso nosotros decidimos unirnos a ustedes y a que nos ayudaran con respecto a la problemática del bullying.
So, the request is, is to please look at the requests that this group has made in an effort to remedy the bullying issue that's taking place, and that's really what they're after.
Y solo, pues, me queda decirles que muchas gracias, y pues que vamos a seguir teniendo en parte, verdad, viniendo a ofrecer nuestras ideas, a ver qué soluciones, verdad, se pueden dar durante el trayecto del año. Muchas gracias.
And so thank you very much. The group will continue to put forth ideas and try to come up with solutions in conjunction with you throughout the year. Thank you. Buenas noches.
Monica, can you let her know that? I'm going to give this to Laura. There's missing information on this. Can you get that easily?
Okay, yeah.
Thank you. All right, it's on to District Administrators' Record.
Okay, so I have five very unrelated topics to share with the board and the public. One, I will be out of the district Wednesday through Friday of this week at the State Superintendent Conference. I will be working in the capacity of the superintendent, but will not be onsite. Welcome to answer any phone calls that the board may have, but we'll have a plan for onsite coverage here as well. Again, I'll be leaving Tuesday night and then for the end of the week. Secondly, and again, these are completely unrelated, I just wanted to remind the board and the public that over the last couple of years, the district has sold and/or traded property, okay? Every once in a while, we get people that call about political messages and/or demonstrators that take place, and this is just a reminder to the public and the board that the Richland School District no longer owns Rockbridge, no longer own Lincoln, Jefferson, Story Field, and Hive Drive. And so the road leading up to the high school here is a city street, okay? So, again, just wanted to remind the board that we've had an uptick in phone calls and some notifications regarding some of that, and just want to make sure everybody's aware. Thirdly, you have likely noticed, and our public has likely noticed if they've looked at our agenda for tonight, there's a slightly new structure to the open session. You'll see that the hiring of certified staff, as well as open enrollment, is now being done in open session at the direction of the board. Open enrollment is done on consent agenda. Applications contain personally identifiable information, therefore they're placed so only the board can see. Board members do have to be logged in in order to see that, but the public can now see the number of open enroll-in that will be approved, as well as those outs that are approved each meeting, and that will help to hopefully provide some transparency in our goal of reducing the open enrollment out numbers. Fourth, WASB, Wisconsin Association of School Boards, the governing body that oversees school boards in the state of Wisconsin, they have a business honor role. They recognize members, local members of different districts, and this is where community businesses or organizations are recognized for supporting, quote, "our local public schools and students," end quote, by providing resources or additional learning opportunities for students and staff. And so, on behalf of the Richland School District, we are honored to acknowledge two local businesses as being members of the WASB honor role, and that is two media groups in our community. WRCO Civic Media Group, I've got a certificate for them for acknowledging, excuse me, in recognition of supporting our local public schools and students, as well as the Richland Observer for their efforts in supporting local public schools and students. And so I will get those certificates to the observer who's present here tonight, as well as WRCO, who I believe is joining us online, and I just want to extend a sincere thank you and congratulations on behalf of WASB and the Richland School District. If you're interested in the full list of recipients throughout the state, you can visit WASB's website at www.wasb.org. So, before I get to the last thing, maybe a round of applause and congratulations. And then finally, starting next Monday, September 30th, we've got homecoming. I know Student Council is up on the agenda, so I will let them share some of the specifics, but I do want to share with the board and the public that we will have an early release on Friday due to the homecoming parade. Richland Center Primary School and Intermediate School students will be releasing at 1:50. Richland Center High School students will be releasing at 2:15 to attend or participate in the parade, which kicks off at 2:55. Any questions from the board? Thank you.
On to the board member reports. The Buildings, Property, and Transportation met Wednesday, September 18th at 6:00 p.m. We covered seven topics. One is an easement request by a local family that will come to the agenda for October 10th. We started the snowplow bids and specs as far as approving the timeline for that, so that will continue moving forward. We got to open the Jefferson School time capsule and kind of take a peek at some of the things that were placed there in, I believe, 58? Mr. Steele? Jefferson? What year?
52 or 58.
Okay, somewhere in that, right? So there'll be more to come on that. We'd like to put that along with the Lincoln School time capsule from a year or so ago in some form of a display case or feature it, so that the community can come see. Item number four was a roofing project update. At the high school here, it is 100% completed and is now warranted for the next 20 years. Supposedly, everything went so well that there is no confirmation, but it could last up to 40 years with as well as everything went and the quality of the work that was done. They were on schedule and on budget. Item number five was referendum projects. We are still progressing in the planning phase. Item number six, non-referendum projects. This will be something that comes back at a later date, but is dealing with some surplus interest dollars from ESRT while it was sitting in the local government investment, and so there'll be more discussion with the board on that. Last topic was the 24-25 schedule at a glance. After that meeting, curriculum assessment and public relations met at 7:30. Our first item was the check and connect staffing changes. That'll become a That'll be coming to the full Board, I believe, on the 10th also of October. And the Check and Connect, for those not aware, is a kind of one-to-one, is the intended mentoring with a, maybe a troubled individual or somebody who's needing some additional help and a peer mentor. And so then we have 14-ish staff members that participate in that and have kind of off-duty obligations that go with it. And it's so successful that Ms. Lisa Goff is actually being recognized at the National Convention, which I believe is in the month of October in the state of Minnesota, and so really good things happening there. We went over the 2024 Summer School Review in regards to staffing and number of individuals who participated. We always encourage people to sign up. Better numbers are better for everybody in the district. Number three was just discussing goals and priorities. Item number four was again the non-referendum of surplus ESRT, which again will be later. And lastly was a recap of our 24-25 Schedule Letting Clients.
The Richland School District Foundation met on Monday, September 16th. The Guidance Department provided updates. Senior Night is going to be October 9th, and Scholarship Night will be May 28th, which is Wednesday before graduation. We also discussed the Homecoming Parade, that there will be a Richland School District Foundation float that will have the Outstanding Alumni folks involved with that. There are two, two people that were selected for this year's Outstanding Alumni, Urban Peckham and Rob Brenish. And under New Business, we discussed a little bit about the musical production and that there are some local businesses that are willing to donate to help offset costs there. We discussed our, our social media platform and getting out information. We do have two openings still for Board members. We have a couple of folks that we're looking at talking with on a one-on-one basis, but if there's anyone who's interested in joining Richland Foundation, that we are open to discussion with that to have you come onboard and help us with those things. And finally, we discussed adding a Fine Arts Hall of Fame on the West Commons. We are in the beginning stages of that process with developing criteria and what that's going to look like moving forward. And then the Personnel Negotiations Committee met on Wednesday, the 18th. We had an update with regards to the employee groups meet and confer, that all employee group requests and proposals need to be brought to Mr. Board for consideration. We just went over job descriptions and got those updated for the Check and Connect Mentor and also the Director of Curriculum Instruction. Those will be, will be brought to the Board at a future date. We discussed the distinguished staff criteria, and we're looking for folks to volunteer their time to be on a committee to help develop what the, what that will look like as far as the reward, if you want to call it that, what the compensation could look like. And we'd like to have all buildings and all employee groups represented in that. And we ended up postponing the draft budget review to the, we're going to have a special meeting on October 2nd to discuss that. And then we went over Board Development, which we have folks coming back to our October meeting. Due to prioritizing our district administrative evaluation development that we're working on, we thought to having the evaluation was more important than getting our, moving forward on a new project with the Board Development and what that will look like. And we also had Ms. Goff and Mr. Jones present information on the Check and Connect staffing changes that are needed. We, as the committee level, we approved two more positions and funding for those, and that will be brought to the full Board. And then we looked at the Schedule Letting Clients, and there's really no changes to what we have planned. Then the Policy Committee met as well that evening, and went through several policies from the OLA with updates for those and Schedule Letting Clients again. We have more policy updates from the OLA scheduled, but we are not sure if they're going to be providing any additional updates at this time. And then we will be focusing at our next meeting on the advertisement and sponsorship policies that will be for sponsoring our facilities, buildings, grounds, potentially the IMC those types of places.
Right, on to Student Council Report.
Okay, so back in school, so we have our Student Council reporting again monthly, and tonight we have Student Council Rep. Devon Woodhouse and Ternan Culver. Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. Hi, I'm Ternan Culver, and I'm a junior at RCEA and Student Council Corresponding Secretary. Currently, Student Council is working on planning for next week, putting finishing touches on the parade, the float, Skits and Spirits, talent preparations, all of this year's theme, or bits in Hollywood.
Um, hi, everyone. I'm Devon Woodhouse Jr. here. I am the Student Council Public Relations Officer. Um, the design for the t-shirt this year, we actually had a contest. A few students submitted designs, and we voted on, yeah, the winner. JoJo Ellers, she's a senior here. The link to purchase shirts is on the district's Facebook page and is live until tomorrow at 9:00 in the morning. And we have all of our other important homecoming information posted in the homecoming page on the school district website.
Are you still accepting entries for the parade? When is the deadline for that?
Well, the like official cutoff was on the 13th, but we are still taking like new entry forms if you get it to us. But we encourage people if they like want to be in the parade to get them in as soon as possible, because we will get to a point where we stop taking them.
I just know that we'll get some calls at the building levels of the district office. We want to make sure that we direct them to the right folks. So as of right now, you're still accepting them or would be able to? Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Back to School Report, Building Admins.
All right, so we're now a couple weeks into school, well underway, and I thought this would be a good opportunity for Building Admin to take just a couple of minutes and give some shout-outs, celebrations about some of the great things that are happening in their buildings in our district as we start the school year off. So, let's start at the primary school. Mrs. Hardy.
Good evening. First of all, we're excited to have welcomed and enrolled 31 additional students at the primary school since the beginning of July. So we're beginning well over 300 students at our school. Our staff have worked tirelessly to prepare the building over the summer and have it ready for all our returning students, as well as the teachers bringing back the magic of back-to-school time and transforming these spaces from summer empty to creating a learning environment rich in design and engagement for our students. They're getting to know each of the students and discovering their strengths and areas to help them soar. Our new staff are making connections, getting vested, are, are already invaluable to our school and working with our students. Our students are demonstrating the Hornet Way in all our school spaces, including the lovely bus. The Hornet Way along with Above the Line is heard and practiced every day throughout the building. If you come and join or stop in, you will hear that language all about the school. They've been shared and they've been reviewed daily. The students are earning their Hornet Way coupons, so families that are watching are picking up parts of this. If you ask your child, "What is a Hornet Way coupon?", hopefully they'll be able to tell you because they're getting delivered fast and furious in the office as they are earning them from being observed making those great choices or stepping up and making those positive actions with one another. Our E.C. and through second grade students are finding their way around the school, learning routines, and huge piece making new friends. Our families are creating new routines that help children to be well-rested, which is so important in our day, especially with our kindergartners not having that rest time. Those days are long, so those bedtime routines and those schedules are really important in keeping them going throughout the day and not falling in their tracks. You know, it just, all of that makes a difference, and together we're teaming to make sure students are at school and ready for the 8 o'clock start of our day. Thank you to the high school students who are earning credit and coming on down to be aides in our classrooms. This is a wonderful collaboration between the high school and our building. We also want to thank community volunteers that have already worked many hours or volunteered many hours. Mary Knee, Diane Clements, and Pat Clements, as they began volunteering on day one, helping to direct traffic and making sure everybody was safely moving about our parking lots or in our bus lanes. And if, you know, got to put this in there, if you want to volunteer, come on in, and we have forms in any of our school offices if you wish to volunteer in other buildings as well. But if you're looking for that opportunity, extra hands, listening ears, and kind hearts add to our school. This year, we are implementing new curriculum with ELA and math. This is a steep learning curve, and our staff are learning together. We are a professional learning community, and these Wednesday early releases have already allowed some deeper conversations and understanding of these tools than we would have ever had available or been possible for us. Our first and second grade students just completed iReady diagnostic testing, so we had a few pals finishing up today. Otherwise, our kiddos are finished with this first step. This helps us in knowing where are they and how to best meet them where they're at and help move them forward in our journey throughout the year ahead. We have meetings this week to help review that student data and instructional planning again to best support our students' needs moving forward. As far as what's coming up, well, homecoming! That's it? No, that's not it. But it's a huge piece that we're all excited and looking forward to and the energy that comes with that. We also will be having our kindergarten through second grade come actually here for a musical performance in October, The Box Out Bullying, which was mentioned earlier tonight. We'll be having that in October. Parent-teacher conferences on the 16th, Family Safety Prevention, excuse me, Fire Safety Prevention, Halloween Safety, and then our first PTO event for the year will be with trick-or-treating. So it's a busy time, lots of excitement, lots of opportunities, and as you can hear, safety is a big piece as we're moving throughout it and setting those expectations so everybody knows what's cooking and what is, what are the needs and how to move forward making those above-the-line choices. Any questions?
I have one. The Hornet Way coupon, what does that reward?
What does that earn you?
Yes.
That earns you a name and a drawing every, well, it used to be Wednesdays, we're going to be shifting to Thursdays. And then Mrs. Iverson draws names, and then students are called down, a handful, typically, I think like 10 or so students' names are drawn, and then they pick a prize from a prize box. Just a little celebration and incentive to keep them on the right path. Okay.
All right, let's do the Intermediate School with Mrs. Brown.
Well, it's always hard to pile up with Ms. Hardy because we do work so much hand-in-hand with what we're doing, and I'm sure the high school feels probably the same. But here are some things that have kind of been happening at the Intermediate Building. So, just like the primary, we continue to work on our school-wide expectations. So along with Above and Below the Line, we also talk about our four Bs, so being respectful, being responsible, being safe, and being kind. Along with that, we also have our One Hive motto. So Hive, we have healthy choices, integrity, values, and empathy. So every quarter, we focus on one of those letters and what it means. And so those can be a variety of things that we try to teach our students. But again, going along with that lifelong learner mentality and making sure that, again, all of our academics are important, but at the end of the day, by the time they leave our building and going up to the middle school, high school, we want to make sure that they're ready for that jump. So, and then after that, we want to make sure that they're ready for life outside of school, so teaching those skills. With that, our third graders are always our new bodies into our building, and so last year was the first year that we implemented them moving from homeroom to homeroom for all the different subjects. We've continued that this year, and we're seeing some success. Well, I know we'll be getting into data as the year goes on and looking at our numbers when it comes to testing, and we've seen some great growth in that area, so that showed us that we were doing something right. So we continue to have our students moving from class to class, and I know this provides a natural movement break for our kiddos as well, so providing that opportunity to get up and move and then also to connect with different staff within our building, so working towards our district goals. Our fourth, fifth, and sixth graders continue to make new friends. We've had so many new faces within our building. I would say we're close to about 280-ish students. I haven't looked the past week or so, but we are close to that, so our numbers have definitely grown since the end of last year to now, which is great to see too. Our staff continue to work in our professional learning communities. So as Ms. Hardy mentioned, on our Wednesdays, we're getting together, and we're looking at not only our math and our reading curriculum that we're having new this year, but also looking at just across the board, you know, what are we teaching in our science and social studies classes? And then also looking at music P.E. for our school counselors, how are they best supporting? And then how we can work better to just firm up what's happening in our district to really help and support everybody. So this week, we're getting together district-wide, so looking forward to having those conversations across our district. Along with all of that, one of the newer programs that we're working on in our building that I've been fortunate to help be a part of is supporting our multilingual learners. So we have been able to hire, the title has kind of changed, but working to support our language learners in their home language, many of them being Spanish, in the classroom, and then also just checking in with them and providing hopefully some interventions to help build their skills. So that has been really neat to see. Brendan Wannakey has been working in our building along with Matty Goldwasser to work on, who are those kids and how can we really make sure we're connecting with them and supporting them so they can get the most out of their education while they're in our building? So lots more is coming down the road with that, but excited to see that off and going. And then we also help, we always have all kinds of excitement at the Intermediate Building, and so having the Governor visit was definitely an exciting moment. It was great to see him in the classrooms, just asking kids questions, the kids got to ask him questions, and so it was just a neat opportunity because not many people can say that a very important special guest came to visit. So they were, some of them, my fourth graders, had no idea who it was, and it was great as we rounded the corner, all of the fourth graders are in the hallway and, but it was a great time. So everyone got to kind of see the Governor, ask him some questions, but it was definitely a memorable experience for all. More to come as the year goes on, always looking forward to everything that's coming, but always stop down and visit. It's a great time. Questions for anybody?
Okay, and then High School with Co-Principals Luntke and Perkins.
Uh, yeah, so Ms. Hardy and Ms. Brown talked about a lot of stuff that's district-wide as Ms. Brown mentioned, but we're going to talk about some of the changes that you'll see up at the high school campus here, and all of them have been super positive for us so far. First thing I'd like to mention is our staff, both our returning staff and our new staff have been actively working to improve and getting better every single day and coming to work with a smile and positive. That's one thing we've heard, is a common theme we've heard around the building so far, is the excitement and the energy of our building. So that, we believe that that to be true, our staff believes that to be true, and our students believe that to be true. So we're off to a great start. The challenge now is to keep that momentum going. This school year, we have a natural energy boost coming next week with Homecoming Week. Homecoming football games on Friday against Valley, dances on Saturday, so we're excited about that. One change for, for this school year, we went down from three lunches to two lunches. One thing that we've, up until this year, that's been separate between 7:00 and 8:00, coming into a 9:12 building to make it a 7:12 building, was our lunches. Our middle school lunch had their own lunch. We went away from that this year and combined to make it a 9:12 lunch and then a 7:12 lunch. Okay, so the first lunch is all high school students, the second lunch is middle school mixed with high school, and what we've noticed early is that some of our behaviors from our middle school students have been reduced greatly. For whatever reason, we're a little unsure, but the energy's still high at lunch, but having the high school schoolers in there to model that behavior, what to expect, has been super helpful. Another thing that we changed up for this year and moved to is longer passing time. One thing that we noticed from last school year is passing time, we were hearing students... One thing that we noticed from last school year is passing time, we were hearing student feedback, they didn't have enough time to go to the bathroom, they couldn't go from point A to point B and go to the bathroom and make it on time. And then we were seeing a lot of classroom breaks throughout the blocks. So that was one thing we wanted to minimize. We still are allowing classroom teachers to take breaks, but we're asking them to do it outside, go on a walk, get some fresh air around the building, come back in, ready to reset and learn. Teachers are doing a fantastic job with that. And then also encouraging students to use the bathrooms, get drinks, and do what they need to do during that six-minute-long passing time because it is extended. The goal, I think it's, we've been good, not great, at it so far, is to reduce the amount of traffic during the hallway in instructional time. So some room for growth there, but I think we're trending in the right direction with it, but we've been very pleased with the six-minute passing time. One concern we had was our seventh and eighth graders with more energy and more free time, what that would look like, and they've done a really nice job to this point. So kudos to our, all of our student body and our staff for being out and supervising that.
Another thing that we want to highlight is our RC program. That's our small school within the school here for our middle school students. It has been going phenomenal. We identified some students last year that we were seeing were struggling with transitions to different teachers and just managing their assignments and getting to where they needed to be. So now they're in a small setting with one teacher, but they have the opportunity to try some electives in the day in a larger group. And if that doesn't go well for them in the day, then they can go back to this room to kind of, to reset themselves. But Ms. Benish has been doing a great job of taking them out in our community to just letting them know their resources. One of the first things she did the first week was show them where the library was, show them where the post office is, show them where the community center is, and just, they know more about their community and have that time with her where they can learn what they could utilize within the community. So they use Simons at some of their FIAE time, they just have some more freedoms that way, but that small setting, that quieter setting has been very helpful to them. Another thing that we did is we eliminated the morning homeroom time, which was like a fifteen-minute time, and that was just one of those transitions that, it's nice to have that homeroom to touch base, but it was also a little disruptive to have to move so quickly. So we took that away and then extended our Hornet Hour time in the afternoon, and with that, we were able to make the time longer, so three days a week still teachers convince students that they're, they need to retake a test or take a test or just need some extra help. And then one day, Monday, we did it today, is read across the hive. So for thirty minutes, everybody's reading, we read, I visited a classroom today and just to model, I'm reading, too. And then at the end, the last fifteen minutes, they get SEL time. So today, one of the things I posed to ask that the teachers do, ask the students to share with their Hornet Hour, what's something they love about school and then something that is a stress for them right now. And I think, I visited a teacher later on to say, how did I go? Did they, did they share out? And she said, yes, and it was a new teacher. She said, I was able to share out with them, too, the stress I was feeling in the new building. So just trying to make those connections and give them that time, that SEL time. And then lastly, we added club rotations every Wednesday. So last year, we were not able to offer that every Wednesday, but now we can do that every Wednesday for the students that maybe can't meet with a club after school or before school. They have that opportunity during school to be part of that. So we're super excited to open that up to more people and to incorporate the SEL time, too.
Questions? Questions from the board, community board administrators? Thank you for getting our school year off to such a great start.
I had two questions, and it would be directed at all administrators. The first, and this is for knowledge of the board, has the, what kind of feedback have you received with the new PLC being the every Wednesday as opposed to every sixth week and service day? First question.
From who?
From everybody involved, the staff themselves. I know we're only a couple, few weeks in, however, I think many of us saw the significant positive that could be reached having it just continuing education as opposed to a, oh yeah, that's right, it's been six weeks. I'm sort of curious.
As far as families, I haven't heard anything. As far as with staff, they'd love more, right? Especially as we are rolling out two curriculums and all the teachers are rolling out those two curriculums. So they're sponges and wanting to absorb all they can so they can best teach to our students.
Speak to families a little bit. One of their concerns going to this Wednesday release was the supervision of student athletes. If their practice had to start at four-thirty or later because their coach is a district employee as well, what would they do if they're a non-driver? So Ms. Sungby, Ms. Perkins, and I, we're actually able to create a rotation with our support staff. So our support staff is actually supervising our student athletes in the East Commons during that time, has provided a nice opportunity for our non-driving student athletes to hang out. That was one thing I think families were worried about and they've been very pleased with it. We were actually like, okay, how many student athletes are going to show up? Ten, fifteen? I think it was probably around fifty that stayed and we're working on schoolwork. Like, it's not a study hall, they're not in after-school tension, they're not expected to be quiet, but they use their time really wisely, so that was pretty impressive. So we have heard some feedback on that. So that's one thing our families have been happy with.
And then staff at the high school. So we surveyed our staff last week, Brian and I did, during our building meeting time at the beginning, just asked them to let us know some things that are going well, some things that we aren't seeing and need to work on, and I think every team, when I say team, English, social studies, said thank you for this time. Thank you, it's been great, so positive feedback from staff.
And I would echo, you know, I haven't heard too much from families. I know we have the STEAM program that is there for their kindergarten through eighth grade, and so our numbers are a little higher on Wednesdays, which is great. That is available, you know, Monday through Friday for all of our families. But again, the teachers are very grateful for this time. You know, we have just a lot going on and just that time to collaborate and, you know, having our first vertical meeting, you know, our sixth grade teachers working with our high school and our special staff working together, looking forward to that time, just having those conversations and how we can better support our students and how we can better support ourselves. But just that collaboration time is huge, so it's been great across the board from our staff.
I'd like to add, with that support staff, it's been a benefit to be able to have them because so many of our support staff are supporting students in the classroom, and so it's giving them an advantage to learn about the curriculum tools we're using and to be able to elevate that opportunity with the children when they're working with them in small group or one-on-one.
Thank you. My second question, because of how public comment went, something that I'm uncertain about and was curious to get confirmation, do we have Spanish-speaking staff members in all buildings?
Yes, at the high school.
Yeah, I have, yeah, not fluent. We have staff that spend time in our building that can support us in having that communication or, you know, making sure that that's there, but not that it's there all day.
Understood, thank you. Any other questions from the board? So now we'll move on to the minutes. Your motion to approve prior meeting minutes of September ninth, two thousand twenty-four.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Bailey, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Dickman, discussion? Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
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 Aye. On to financial items, approval of statement of cash and invoices.
I approve the statement of cash dated September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four, and approved Community First Bank General Checking Accounts checks number eight-six-six-zero-two through eight-six-six-three-seven, and ACH numbers two-four-two-five-zero-one-nine-zero-five through two-four-two-five-zero-one-nine-three-five, and for a net total of nine hundred twenty-two thousand, seven hundred eighteen dollars and seven cents. This is for the purpose of general operating costs of the district.
Motion made by Mr. Dowdner, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Hunter, Mr. Bosworth, anything that you want to add?
Yeah, I would add, in the invoices this week, you kind of maybe see three things. One is there's a lot of payments for other schools and officials, so there's a lot of, school is back and activities are back, many, many payments for that. Secondly, you'll see somewhere in there, there's a payment for Chromebooks. If you remember, the vision there was to pay news fund balance and buy the entirety of them and then have the IT department pay back, so to speak, each year for the next four years to build that balance back up. And then finally, Mr. Hunter mentioned that the roof is completed, so you'll see in there the first payment to the roof contractor, which is about half of the total bill, and also you may remember that there are two phases, phase two and phase three. Phase two is paid for out of money, fund balance, phase three is paid for out of refund
How long does the Chromebook purchase last or lease, however you'd like to word it?
Four years.
Mr. Bailey, aye?
Aye.
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 Aye. School finance presentation number two.
Okay, I'm sure you've been on the edge of your seat for the sequel to Mr. Bosworth's first presentation. Tonight, we'll be talking about equalized value levy rates and property taxes versus state aid. So, Mr. Bosworth, whenever you are ready.
Okay, this one, scrolling up and then that, I'm not planning a lot here. There we go. All right. So first, just a quick refresher. Remember, last time we talked about two main topics, student enrollment and revenue limit authority, student enrollment. There are three counts, census count, membership count, and pupil count. Census count is every child that lives in this school district, which does leave include Amish children, I checked with the DPI. Membership count is everybody who lives in this district and goes to public school somewhere. That's the backbone of the revenue limit, which we're talking about a lot today. And then third is the pupil count. Those are kids who are enrolled in our district regardless of where they live. And then revenue limit authority is, the backbone of it is the membership count, and it's the, it's the maximum value that we could, we could bring in for revenue in Fund Ten, Thirty-eight, and Forty-one. Okay? Just a little refresher there. So today, we're going to talk about three things. First, we're going to talk about equalized value. Equalized value, the main concept there is the state sets this up so that every municipality as a whole pays their fair share of taxes in Wisconsin. The second concept we'll talk about today is the levy rate. You often hear about people talking about the levy rate, well, how is that actually calculated and what does that mean? And then finally, we'll talk about, the last time I showed a picture of a cup and two pitchers that pour into it, we'll talk more about that in detail today. A lot of times, that's called equalized aid. So how do you get, how do you decide if a community gets more money from taxes or more money from the state? How do we figure that out? We'll talk about that. Okay, what is equalized value? Again, the idea here, the main idea is to make sure municipalities pay their fair share of taxes, each municipality. Equalized value versus local property assessment. Equalized value is every year, every year, right? You don't, most people don't have their properties reassessed every single year. That happens, you know, could be five years, ten years, fifteen years, kind of depends where you live. Equalized value is done at the state level, and that's done every single year, and the state watches all the properties, and every single year, they tell each municipality, this is how much your property as a whole is worth. City of Richland, here's your equalized value. Village of Richmond Center, here's your equalized value. Township of Dayton, here's your equalized value. As a group, how much the total municipality's property is worth. And then, like I mentioned, local property is assessed less frequently. This is just my own individual house as compared to somebody else's individual house. Taxes really depend more on equalized value than local property, but we'll talk about that a little bit more detail. Why does the state use this thing called equalized value? Why don't they just use the local assessments that all of us have received via our municipality? The reason is that if, if we relied on local property assessments, there would be an incentive for municipalities to assess their properties low and therefore maybe not pay their fair share, quote-unquote, as opposed to another municipality. And these values, every year on August fifteenth, the state Department of Revenue, many, many years ago, it was, the taxation was in the title of the department, they publish these values every year on August fifteenth. So here's an example from a document, by the way, the documents I put in there for you, the board members, there's a, there's a Word document, or maybe it's a PDF, but if you have about thirty minutes of uninterrupted time, you want to sit down and read it, it's all about equalized value, could really help you understand this in even more detail than we can talk about tonight. Here's just a little screenshot from that. So the idea here is up on the top left, hypothetically, we have a county and we have two townships in that county, that's it, that's all there is in there. And local assessed value, so they had each, each property assessed locally, add them all up, what'd that come up to? Township A's local property came up to twenty million, Township B, add it all up, came up to fifty million for a total of seventy million. If we were to use those values and figure out the percentage that each municipality or each township has to pay, you can see Township A would be responsible for about twenty-eight point six percent of the taxes, and Township B about seventy-one percent to add up to a hundred percent. So if you look in this box down below here, that means that if the county was given a levy of a hundred thousand dollars for some reason, Township A would wind up paying twenty-eight thousand six hundred of that, and Township B would pay seventy-one thousand four hundred. So Township B would pay a lot more than Township A. And this is an example of if we relied on local property assessments to handle school property taxes. This is why the state uses equalized value. State looked at this property and they said Township A, your property looks as if it has a total value of fifty million. And they said Township B, it looks like your property also has a total value of fifty million dollars. So therefore, each of your townships are going to pay fifty percent of the total tax bill. So you can see Township A and Township B then would each be responsible for fifty percent or fifty thousand dollars each. And then what would happen is inside of Township A, all of the individual property owners would have that fifty thousand dollars spread out proportionally amongst them. We'll talk a little bit more about that at the next session. So that's equalized value, that's why it exists. Total value of your whole municipality, so that municipality A and municipality B both pay their fair share. Okay, what is levy rate? Well, it's a, it's a math equation. You take total tax that the school district is going to apply to the district as a whole, and you divide it by the total equalized value of the whole school district. So you add up all the municipalities, what's the total equalized value the state says our property is worth, that's the levy rate. So let's look at an example. Let's just say that a school district had a levy, they were going to levy eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars from their, from their whole school district, and the equalized value from the state, this whole district is worth a hundred million dollars. You would divide those two and we would get a levy rate of point zero zero eight five. Quite often, you hear people use the term mill rate. How does that compare to this? It's essentially the same thing, but you just take that number and you multiply it by a thousand. So now the levy rate, the mill rate, is eight point five. And then maybe you've also heard of, well, how does that figure out, how do I figure out how much taxes I would have to pay there? What that means is that for every one thousand dollars of property value somebody has, What that means is that for every $1,000 of property value somebody has, according to equalized value, they would pay $8.50. So if a home was worth, was equalized valued at $125,000, 125 times $8.50, their tax, school district tax would be $1,062.50. Okay? That's levy rate. All right, so this is just an exact copy. It's nothing new. I'm just pointing this out. I just want to point out that this is a math equation, so we could do a little algebra with this and do some solving for one variable, and we could change this around so that we could solve for total tax. Levy rate times equalized value equals total tax. Just using the same numbers, we can, the same numbers you saw before, just trying to show mathematically, we can move stuff around to solve something else if we need to. Okay, so, question is, what if the equalized value of a school district increased by $1 million? And we wanted to keep the mill rate constant. All right, sometimes you'll hear school districts say that, our mill rate was $7.50. We want it to be the same thing next year. We want it to stay at $7.50. And the equalized value went up. It used to be 100 million, it went up by a million dollars. Now it's 101 million dollars. So using the math formula that we just talked about, you can see that the amount of money that the school district could generate in property taxes has gone up. It was 850,000, now it's 858,000 because the equalized value went up. It was 100 million, now it's 101 million. And the school district is saying, we want the levy rate to stay constant. That's one option at times. That's an increase of $58,000 from the previous year. That's more revenue for the school district. That's good, right? Generally, yes. Let's talk about some details on how those numbers come to be. So I think the main question we have to ask ourselves is why would the equalized value have gone up? Why would, last year was 100 million, now it's 101 million. What happened to make that value go up? Well, there's really two main reasons why the equalized value would go up. One is if there was new construction that came in, and the other is if there was inflation. Regardless of how it came to be, the equalized value increased, which means that if the levy rate stayed constant, the school district could generate more revenue. However, one of these scenarios is a little bit easier on existing taxpayers than the others, so let's look a little bit more in detail at that. Play about new construction. So if there's new construction, that means that compared to last year, now we have more properties in our school district than we used to. And as a result, the equalized value went up. So in our example, if the new, if all the new property was worth $1 million total and everything else was valued at the exact same number it had been the previous year, all of that new tax would have come from the new properties, the new homes. This is just kind of what I was saying there, it would all come from the new property owners. So that means that if you were an existing property owner, and last year, you opened up your tax bill and it showed I have to pay $850, in this hypothetical example, when you open it up the next year, it would still show I have to pay $850. But yet, the school district had generated more revenue because the new revenue had come from the new construction. So new, yeah, from new construction, from the new property owners. The opposite of that, not opposite, just the other scenario, what if there was no new construction? That would mean that what had happened is all of the existing properties had seen their values go up due to probably inflation, potentially some other, something happened in the community. Regardless, the same homes are now valued at more money than they were before. The school district, again, could say, I want to keep that mill rate constant. We want to raise an additional $58,000 in property tax revenue because we can inside of the revenue limit now. But what's different now is that in the existing property owner that had opened up the tax bill last year and said I have to pay $850, now they open it up the next year, it's going to be more than 850. Every property owner is going to pay a little bit more to make up for that extra $58,000 that the school district could bring in for revenue now. Most schools experience a mixture of these two things. They have some new growth, they have some inflation. However, speaking with a broad brush, it really kind of depends upon where you live, right? Some school districts near larger cities, and we're talking like suburbs possibly, they've experienced a lot of new construction over the years. And they're able to continually increase their revenue, and their existing property owners don't feel it as much as some of the communities where there isn't as much growth. Some school districts in rural areas have not experienced a lot of new construction. However, all school districts are faced with increased costs, just like homeowners are. Prices go up for things, need to pay more money, still need to generate more revenue. So that means that in a place with less new construction, more of that responsibility for the increased revenue falls on the existing property owners. Okay, I showed you this last time. This is the revenue limit worksheet. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to close this for just a second. I'm going to open up this because you can see it a little bit more clearly. I just want to walk through this. Is there a way that we can get Steve's thing out of the corner there? Maybe in the bottom left-hand corner, it would work better, because I got some important numbers up there I'd like to take a look at. I can't even see it on my screen, actually. First world problems. Get your own thing out of the corner. I just meant the box itself. I know that Steve is gone now, but I need to box the whole box. Move down to the bottom left-hand corner if we could.
John, it is available in our, in the agenda.
All right, okay. We'll keep, we'll go full steam ahead then. All right, there's a lot of empty boxes in here. This, what I'm going to show you is the backbone of how this thing is calculated. All the other boxes can kind of make this thing, the total revenue, go up or down a little bit, but they don't change the whole backbone of it. So that's what we're talking about. So the first thing you got to see here is this top-left box, aid certification from last year. So they're asking, how much did you get from the state in aid last year? So in this, this is a total hypothetical situation, not any real school district. This, they got $7 million. The next one, what was, how much did they levy? This school district levied $3 million. So their total revenue last year, total base revenue was 10 million. That transfers up into the upper-right-hand corner, which you can't see up there, but hopefully you can see on your screen, 10 million. The next thing, back over on the left, here's the membership box, membership calculation. So you can see this district's been real steady. Their average, their three-year average from last year was 750. So you take that 750, you drag it up to the top right, you take the 10 million divided by the 750, and they're saying that, okay, last year, school district, you brought in $13,333 per kid. So there's your starting point. Take what was, what were you last year? Here's this year, 13,000 per kid. And then, right below that, in line four, for those of you who have this, it says $325. So you may remember, the budget last year was a big deal because they passed, we're going to have a $325 per increase, per student increase. And then the governor used the special powers and made it go for the next 400 years. That's neither here nor there. What it is, it's in there for at least the next two years, I think, at least one more year. So what that 325 is saying, okay, what happened here? Okay, there we go. We're going to take the 325, and we're going to add it to the 13,333. So our new revenue per pupil is now 13,658 and some change. And so this worksheet is saying, well, you can now actually generate a little bit more. You can generate $325 more now per student. This money is coming from taxes potentially, but we can increase by 325. Okay, now here is the bottom left, over on the left-hand side, there's the current three-year average. Again, in this district, there's no changing. They are still at 750. You bring the 750 over to the right. So now, we take our 13,658, multiply it by our 750 student average, now we have 10,243,000 and some change. That's our new revenue limit because we were given a $325 per kid increase. All right, now we take that new 10,243, we're going to drop it down about two-thirds of the way to line 11. It's the exact same number. And then, right below that, line 12, that is a number that's, how much are we going to get from the state in aid? That's the number that the state generates. For this example, it's the exact same one they got last year, so they're going to get $7 million from the state. Just do a little subtraction there, 3,243,000 and some change. That's the new levy that we're going to have to levy from our community to make up for the money we're not getting from the state. And then finally, down here, how do you figure out the levy rate? You take your total levy, 3,243, divided by your equalized value, which in this case is 350 million, and you get a levy rate of .00926. Multiply that times 1,000, their levy rate is 926. Okay, so that's the backbone of how this revenue limit worksheet works. Back to our presentation, onto the last topic. Okay, why is that not showing up? There we go. So we showed this graphic last time. Every school district has a revenue limit cup in the middle. Remember, our cup is much smaller than somebody from like Sun Prairie because our membership count is going to be a lot smaller than theirs. But yet, every school's got a little bit of, how much green and how much blue do you have in there? How does that get figured out? That's what we're going to talk about now. So there's this thing called equalized aid, state aid. They both use the word equalized. They're two separate concepts. They just both use the same word, equalized. The state has a pot of money. It's a set dollar amount, and it's spread over 421 school districts. The purpose of equalized aid is to level the playing field for spending by providing assistance, aid, to poorer school districts. I really don't like that choice of word there. What they mean is the property value is lower, right? We're not poor people, but the property value is less than maybe some other school districts. And they do this aid so that, I'll show you in a second, it's to make sure that each school district can pay about the same amount of money so that the kids get an equal experience. But if they didn't give any aid, low property value school districts would have to pay a lot of taxes as compared to the high property value school districts. One way to think about it is aid's inversely related to the district property value per member. So if there's high property values, they're going to get less aid. We'll show you in just a second here. So let's imagine two school districts. They're the same size, got the same amount of kids, same number of houses. However, school district one is swampland. It's got hilly terrain, it's got a nuclear power plant right in the middle of it, and it's got a two-lane highway. And then, let's imagine, school district two, it's flat, it's got a rich cropland, it's got some lakeshore properties, it's got a global business in the middle of it, and it's got an exit ramp right off an interstate. So you can clearly see that buying a home in school district one is going to be a lot less money than buying a home in school district two. So the property value, the equalized value of roughly the same property, same number of homes, in school district one, it's 10 million, school district two, maybe 500 million. So how's that work? Well, interestingly, both school districts have a revenue limit of $5 million. How could that be? Well, because it's all based on membership count. They both have the same number of kids, so their revenue that they're allowed to generate is the same. However, the school districts, the residents of school district one would have a significantly larger tax burden to generate the same $5 million as would the folks that lived in school district two. All right, in school district one, their mill rate would actually be 500, which is insane, right? In school district two, their levy rate would be 10. So this really big, does that kind of discrepancy exist? It does, actually. And that's why there's equalized aid. So to ensure that the students in both school districts have the same experience, the state pours more into some cups than they do into others. School district one would receive significantly more aid than school district two. So school district one would almost be green to the top, almost, and probably a little bit of blue. In school district two, probably the entire cup would be blue. It wouldn't have a drop of green in there. That's how that works. But yet, they're both bringing in 5 million revenue, and they're both paying about the same amount of money for their kids so that the kids can have an equal shot wherever they go to school. Here are some actual numbers from the DPI. Only looking at the left-hand column right now, don't look at the right-side stuff, not talking about shared cost. But last year, North Lakeland, per kid, property value of $22,181,140 per student, equalized aid zero. Okay, so North Lakeland, their cup is entirely blue. You don't get any green whatsoever. And then, the complete opposite of that is Abbotsford. Property value per kid is 333,000, so they get an equalization aid of about $10,400 per student. The state minimum to spend on kids is 11,000, so that's got to be, you know, so if you were to look at Abbotsford's cup, it would be almost all green, almost all. Okay? All right, I'll do what we're going to talk about next time, and then if you have any questions. So next time, we'll talk about tax levy apportionment. So we'll actually look even more closely at how a school district distributes its total tax on the municipalities. We'll look at referendum. How does, inside of that equalized, excuse me, inside of that revenue limit? I don't know why that doesn't show up for me. You just have to take my word for it, I guess. Inside of some of those empty boxes would get filled in with numbers, and then that would affect the total revenue they can bring in. How does a referendum change the total revenue, and how does it change the levy rate? And then finally, we'll take a look at an actual tax bill and see how that, see how that works. And then finally, we'll take a look at an actual tax bill and see how that see how that works. Okay, any questions?
I have some. I'm just a high school graduate, so I need you to hold my hand through this process. Do you know, and sorry to put you on the spot if you don't, um, does the state treat every municipality different? So are they on a one-to-one basis, so there's subjectiveness by the powers that be? So hypothetically, let's say, the political powers that be much prefer suburbs and cities, and they are not a fan of rural communities. Is it possible that those powers that be would say, yeah, we think your equalized value went up, say, fifty million dollars, but at the same time withhold the additional aid from forcing the property owners to come out of pocket that much more?
Sure, I see what you're what you're saying there. I don't know for sure. I don't think so. I think that that's a, um, you know, that Department of Revenue, they've been they've been doing this equalized aid thing for, I believe, over a hundred years like this. I would assume that it's all neutral, but I can't say that for sure. Any other questions? Thank you. All right, Mrs. Steele, consent agenda items?
Motion to accept the donation of school supplies valued valued at approximately two hundred and fifty dollars from from Compeer Financial. Motion to accept the donation of school supplies valued approximately five hundred and seventy-eight dollars from Dollar General or Dollar Tree, excuse me. Motion to accept the donation of school supplies valued at approximately two hundred dollars from Rockwell Automation. Motion to accept the donation of five hundred dollars from the First Baptist Church. Motion to accept the donation of Tate valued at approximately a hundred and fifty dollars from Shriver Foods. And approve the twenty-four, twenty-five contract service agreement between the Richland Hospital Incorporated and the Richland School District for occupational therapy assistant services, physical therapy services, and athletic trainer services. And motion to approve four open enrollment in applications and to approve four enrollment out applications for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year as presented. And that is it.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Jervan Landite. Discussion?
Was E, the donation of five hundred dollars, right? And I just didn't hear. Okay, sorry.
From Baptist.
Mr. Dowdner?
Aye.
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 On behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to thank Compeer Financial, Dollar Tree, Rockwell Automation, First Baptist Church, Shriver Foods, and the Richland Hospital for their generous donations. Is there a motion to approve the modified agenda?
Make that motion?
Motion made by Mrs. Dickman. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Traxel. Discussion? Mr. Hunter?
Aye.
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 All right, on to information and discussion items, district transfers and vacancies.
Okay, so you will see that we have a couple of positions open. We had some spec-aid interviews, uh, this last week after the board book, uh, was published, and we've got a couple of candidates starting here this week, um, a couple of future employees starting this week. We do still have one additional opening in one of our ID classrooms here at RCHS. And then our food server position, that posting just recently closed, uh, last week, and so that interview process is underway. I'm hoping to have that filled soon and hoping to be back to fully staffed. Again, all of the hires throughout the course of the year for certified staff on the left and support staff in co-curricular positions on the right, and the tables below. Questions from the board?
All right, on to referendum project updates.
And Mrs. Stoll, I will need co-hosting ability once again, please, if I don't already have it. Um, okay, so I'm gonna try to project some things up on the screen, but, um, I think Mr. Huntermer had alluded to this earlier, as well as Mr. Bosworth, the roofing, uh, project is complete. That was paid for partially out of fund balance, and then, uh, it was completed with some referendum dollars. Uh, that is complete. That was on budget, on time. Our warranty company has come in and done a full inspection. They've confirmed their warranty for twenty years. Um, secondly, I want to, just a second here, share screen. All right, let me see if we can figure this. All right, secondly, um, we have a website that is has been launched today. It will be tied to our district website, um, but, uh, anyone can certainly get it to it directly from the link. This is a site, uh, that Nexus has put together, and this is the same website that we used when we were getting information out to the public. In fact, all of that information, uh, that was there at the beginning, prior to the referendum, uh, election itself, uh, is at the bottom, the process, the needs, the plan, the tax impact, and then all of the FAQs are listed down below. What I wanna draw the board's attention to is some of the remaining parts of the website. And, um, on the main page, you'll see that we have listed the seven, uh, you're gonna hear us refer to them as buckets. The seven buckets, the seven priorities that we were trying to get done at each of the buildings, um, as it related to the goals and priorities of the school district, safety and security, accessibility and ADA, um, code, technical education improvements at the high school, air conditioning at the two elementary buildings, indoor air quality and energy efficiency, um, deferred maintenance, and then some upgrades to our auditorium. And you'll see, uh, this is somewhat subjective, uh, in terms of the percentages, but each one of those buckets has two, uh, lines that will be updated frequently. Uh, the red line, or salmon-colored line, is the design process. Where are we at in terms of designing different components? Um, none of the construction, obviously, has been done, with the exception of the roof. And then, the gray line below it is the bucket of actual expenditures, actual expenses that we have. So you'll see here, safety and security. Um, we've got between everything, or with everything that we're trying to do at all the buildings throughout the district, uh, we've got about six-point-two million allocated for safety and security, and at this point, we haven't spent any of it, actual dollars spent. The only thing that we have actually spent money on is under deferred maintenance. We've got a portion of that spent, and that was for the roof, okay? And if you click on any one of these things, um, you will then see, so if I click on safety and security, I will then be taken to another page, if it loads. That gives you a little bit more information on the breakdown and how where we are at with the design phase, as well as where we were at with the bidding process and the construction costs. So again, this is safety and security. Primary school has been our 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 first focal point, and we're about seventy-five percent through the design phase, uh, with the primary school. We're we're going to be approaching that last twenty-five percent here in the next thirty to forty-five days, where we're really hammering out details, tile color, what does floor patterns look like? We're in that process right now, but we're about seventy-five percent done at the primary school. Intermediate school is just getting started, and the high school will probably be significantly later. Once this design phase is complete, then the bidding process is happening. Uh, that will be expected to happen in, uh, late fall, early winter, again, for construction to be taking place, um, next summer. Uh, and then, below each one of those, you can get, uh, updates on the primary school, the intermediate school, and the high school. And under those updates, again, it will be taken to another page, taken to another page, and you will see, uh, much more specifics, like what are we doing as it relates to the safety and security at the primary school? What are we doing as it relates to air conditioning, accessibility, and so on and so forth? And so you and the public can view in greater detail where we are at with some of these, um, projects. The next thing I wanna point out on the website is the second timeline, or excuse me, the second tab up on the top is called Project Timeline. And this is a high-level view, uh, Gantt chart of where we are at with the high school roof. Um, blue, excuse me, uh, gold being the building phase, uh, bidding phase, I should say, red being construction phase, and then green being the project closeout phase. And so for the roof, for example, that bidding process was done, um, during the early summer. Construction phase happened throughout the summer, and now you see a green dot next to it. That is complete. Roofing is complete. Primary school, intermediate school, and high school, you'll see that the design phase is taking place at all of those buildings. Uh, primary school, again, seventy-five percent done. Intermediate school is just starting. High school has not started yet as it relates to the design phase. Uh, bidding process will happen this winter, early spring, and possibly into the summer for the high school. Construction starting at the primary school and intermediate school this summer. These were preliminary design and construction timelines. This has not been updated to reflect our most recent timelines. Um, and that's a that's a fluid process, and they plan on updating that periodically, Nexus will, okay? And then finally, what I wanna point out is that the, um, third menu item up at the top is vendor inquiries. If there are any local, uh, or non-local for that matter, but if there are any vendors that are wanting to be included in the bidding process, okay? Local, statewide, regional, whatever it might be, they can click on the vendor inquiries, and they can fill out this form, um, stating what kind of trade or what kind of things they would like to be considered for, and then they will be added to the vendor list, so that when Nexus sends out bid packages for certain components, those, um, vendors can be considered, and they can submit a bid, okay? So that's a general overview of how the, uh, website looks. And again, that'll be linked from our our webpage, and something that we will be referring to oft often for our community to, um, be very transparent and to show that, uh, we're being fiscally responsible with with taxpayers' money. And then the last thing that I wanna point out is it relates to, um, referendum updates. Again, I mentioned that we've got, um, design phase going on. One of the things that has been designed that is, um, nearing completion in terms of the design part is the, uh, adaptations to the bus loop at the primary school. The same type of thing will be happening at the intermediate school, but, uh, I did wanna share. We shared this with the Buildings and Property Committee, and wanted to share it with the board and the public as a whole. Uh, this is what the design will look like at the primary school in an effort to, uh, one, try to get all of our buses at this location at the same time. Right now, if you have, uh, seen, uh, the craziness that happens at the end of the day, we have half of our buses at the primary school, half of them at the intermediate school in the first wave, and then they kind of crisscross and go to the other buildings before, and to load the second half of kids before they all head up to the high school. Our hope, uh, in designing all of these bus loops is that, one, uh, we can improve our safety and security by trying to segregate parents and buses as much as possible. And, two, we are trying to get, uh, a setup that allows for all of our buses to be at one site at one time. This will allow for greater flexibility in the future if we started to have staggering starting and ending times without having to worry about this crossover wave that currently takes place. So I'll start over here on the, so this is the front, um, of the primary school. We will still have our staff parking lot on the north side of the building. Uh, this in the morning, this gray area, this will be configured so that this will allow for parents to drop off their kids. This is not meant for a park and rock your kids in. This is meant for a pull-up to the curb, and students are able to exit and go into the building on their own, okay? Uh, also in the morning, while this option is going on for those that want to park, excuse me, uh, just drop their kids off, there's an option over here in a new parking lot where parents will enter on the south side. They will enter this lot, this parking lot. They will be able to park their cars and then walk across a monitored intersection for pedestrian crosswalk for parents to take their children into the building or take them, uh, to the playground. However, building administration deems that process to look. But then also, you'll see three lanes where buses will be able to pull up and drop students off in the morning right at the sidewalk and allow them to be able to, um, do the same thing, get off the bus and enter the playground or the building. At the end of the day, um, most of this in the front will not be happening. Maybe some special education transport, our shorter buses may be picking up in front. But we would essentially have all of our buses in these three bus lines. And there will be, um, sidewalk, concrete sidewalk, curb and gutter, uh, with some landscape barriers, bushes, things like that to prevent students from wanting to naturally just meander across traffic. But all of our buses will be lined up here. Our staff will be able to take our students out to the appropriate bus, standing on a sidewalk, be able to get on the bus safely, all loading from the appropriate side, where our our parents are, uh, parking, uh, in the parking lot. And then you can see they can enter from one side, and there's kind of a little loop here where we can then have an adult monitor. Um, parents can exit from the south side, but once the buses start to go through and release, we want all fifteen or twenty of those buses to be able to exit at once. We would actually have an adult likely monitoring that area so that all of our buses are leaving at one time, going to the next building that they're going to, without a bunch of parental vehicles interjecting in the middle of those buses. So, uh, there are still some details and implementation to work out, but that's generally, uh, what will happen. We should have a very nice flow for a a parking lot here, also surrounded by curb and gutter with sidewalk around the outside with some additional barriers to ensure that the traffic flow within that parking lot happens naturally. And then a nice segregated area for our buses to pick up and drop off, uh, in this area. So I'm excited about, uh, what Nexus has put together, working with the civil engineers. Um, I would say that this is probably ninety-five percent done. There may be some some minor tweaks that'll take place as, uh, the different folks put their stamp of approval on it. Uh, but that's really what the bus loop should look like. So there's some high-level updates as far as the website and, um, some bus loops. Again, we're working on a lot of design phase right now, um, but that's that's generally what we're looking at. Any questions from the board related to referendum? Mr. Van Landite?
Yeah, my question, having lived in Wisconsin all my life, uh, my concern would be in the wintertime, if we have snow, there's not too many areas to push snow or, you know, if you've got curvings, that plows have to go around or deal with.
Yep, we we plow all of that ourselves, and we've confirmed with our maintenance department, they will have no issues getting in there and plowing it with these entrances and exits and pushing the snow off. We don't anticipate that being a problem at all.
Because I push all my own snow at the farm, and I know that some of these, you know, the angles and the curves and the hits, and there's not a lot of space, so that's the only thing. I I like the way I let.
These are nice wide sidewalks. We can get our our brushers up there on the sidewalks. We can get our plows in there, make, uh, all the angles have been considered for that very purpose.
As long as that's been considered, I think that's great. Thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
Another consideration that I'd point out that came through the Buildings and Property was, uh, it's already been confirmed by the fire department that they can make that turn on the, what would that be? North end entrance of the driveway. They've confirmed they could make that angle safely.
Been very impressed working with Nexus and their army of engineers to come up with the best plans possible. It's been a neat process. So a lot more to come, but this is just one one small piece that is starting to become finalized.
It's goals and priorities update.
Uh, okay, I'm gonna stop sharing here. All right, so this is the first time that, uh, the goals have now been established. Uh, we've got, uh, four priorities. Um, we've been talking about this at the curriculum committee. This is an ongoing, uh, topic, very early in our school. This is an ongoing topic, very early in our school year, but I will be sharing this with the board as far as these four priorities. Again, our goal, retaining 80% of our resident students, which would be a 5% increase from where we've been at. Third Friday count just happened last Friday, so those numbers are still filtering in from our different buildings, and Mrs. Steele will be working frantically over the next couple of weeks to try to get all of those finalized so that we can get those into DPI. Initial numbers look optimistic, but cautiously optimistic as we do all of that. Related to our priorities, we're going to be doing our next round, or excuse me, our first round of student connections surveys by the end of this month, where all of our students will be stating which adults that they feel comfortable talking to and have a connection with. We're also working with all of our buildings in ensuring that we have consistent classroom expectations. You've heard some of the public comments today, inconsistencies. We've been trying to address that as it relates to classroom environments and how we're handling situations and discipline. You heard some folks talk earlier about the distinguished staff. It was in a committee report. I have put out a few please. We are wanting to get more employees to be willing to be on a committee that we'll meet to help take that distinguished staff definition and help us come up with measurable ways to implement it, and then what that looks like from a reward or compensation standpoint. I've got a few people who have expressed interest, but we're still trying to get more employee groups represented and making sure that we have all buildings represented. So we're hoping to have our first meeting shortly after homecoming, early to mid-October regarding that process. And then finally, the fourth priority is the student outcomes and the PLCs. PLCs are professional learning communities. We've had the first couple of PLC meetings, those early releases on Wednesday. You heard some administration talk about that and how welcomed that was. I would say that anecdotally, our high school staff is probably slightly ahead of the game because they have this curriculum pilot program that they started last year, which centered around some of those PLC questions, and specifically PLC question number one, what do we want our students to know, understand, and be able to do? The other two buildings are in the early stages of just understanding PLCs, how they work, and how that process really centers around student outcomes and student learning. And so I'm very optimistic about that opportunity that our staff have on Wednesdays. Again, I think it's welcomed by our staff, but I think you're going to see some great things come out of that, and it's all going to be centered around student learning and making sure that students know what they need to know and how do we know that they know it? So it's a high-level overview of our goals and priorities, but happy to answer any specific questions that the board may have.
Mr. Board, in regards to the third Friday count, if a resident student was absent that particular day, are they not counted as a pupil on a third Friday?
Great question. So state law says that, statutes say that we can count students one of two ways. One, and the easiest, and what we kind of refer to, is if students are present on the third Friday, we count them. They're here, we count them. If they're not here on that day, then we can count them if they are present one day before and one day after. Okay? And the general timeline is we get about three weeks to count them on the after. Okay? Once we report everything. There are still ways we can count them when we get some, more specifically with the January count, but as it relates to the third Friday count, if they were absent on that day, they were there a day before, and at least one day after, then we count them just as if they were here on that day. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Moving on to action items, Southwest CAP, CACFP, vendor agreements providing meals and snacks?
Okay, so you may remember that when the school district owned Jefferson and Southwest CAP had start, and early chatter, early had start, that program was in our buildings, and we helped them by providing meals to those children. Okay? That was very easy when we owned the building, a little bit more problematic when we don't own the building, and that's why it's coming to you a little later than normal. But we've worked out those details in terms of being able to get access to the building from the new owner. We worked with our, first of all, talked to DPI to make sure that we could still provide those meals, and then made sure that it worked with our delivery person as well as our food service. Long story short, we are certainly able to continue to do that from a manpower logistical standpoint as we're delivering meals to some of the other buildings. We can certainly drop some meals off. We're not going to be washing their dishes this year. It's probably the one small change, but otherwise, financially, we're going to be charging them the same rate that we charged them last year, and we're pretty confident that that will cover all of our costs, and it certainly is a nice benefit to the students who will eventually be students in our district and another governmental entity. We don't want to lose money, but we're not, I can't get rid of either. So that agreement states all of that, used as a basis this year, and then we'll look at, we'll be able to examine the financials a little bit more detail. Mr. Bosworth, did I miss anything that you might want to add?
Question again?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm full of them.
It's all right.
You mentioned we would not be washing their dishes. Am I to assume then that they will be single-serving disposable for all meals?
I do not know how they're going to. I believe that they've got a dishwasher, and they will be washing the dishes on-site, is what I believe that they will be.
And then returning them to us for further use, I assume?
If it is, if it is our dishes, they would wash them, and we just kind of would give them kind of two cycles. Here's the new ones, pick up the clean ones, and if it's their dishes, they'll just distribute them accordingly. I don't know, do you know, Mr. Bosworth, which way they're going with that? Our dishes or their...
I think it's their own dishes.
I believe so, so, okay.
Is there a motion to approve the Southwest CAP food program vendor agreement as presented?
So moved?
Motion by Mr. Bailey. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Traxel. Discussion? Ms. Traxel?
Aye.
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 Appointments, resignations, retirements of certified staff.
Okay, so this is again the second kind of new structure. You'll see appointments and resignation, retirement. On the agenda, certified staff has to be approved by the board, and so the two positions that we have are two curriculum instructional coaches up here at the high school as presented there.
I'll make the motion to approve the curriculum instructional coaching assignments for the 2024-25 school year. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Van Landy. Discussion?
May I ask what data is as far as the category of curriculum instructional coach?
Yep. Dr. Johnson, you're probably best able to do that, I can... Sure.
Yeah. So the data coach is essentially the person who, instead of coaching on as much instructional support to our staff, they would be helping them learn how to get data, how to gather data. So there's a lot of different kinds of data you can gather. Some are state level, where we can log on to websites that the state has from the test we gave last spring. Some are building level, where we do like cert testing and that type of thing, and some are classroom level, where it's unit tests, daily assessment. You can also gather data about really anything that happens in a classroom. And so that person is going to be helping staff understand how to gather all that and then how to interpret it.
Thank you.
Mrs. Dickman?
Aye.
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 All right, so I'll make the motion to move into closed session pursuant to under statutes 19.851(c) and/or (f) as appropriate to consider employment, promotion, and compensation employees for purposes of discussing individual employee hiring and compensation, and Wisconsin statutes 19.851(f) and Wisconsin statutes 118.125 to discuss student open enrollment applications and individual information related to those applications. The board may take action on these issues in closed session if necessary and appropriate. At the conclusion of the closed session, the board will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mrs. Dickman. Discussion?
Aye.
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 Thank you.